We will call regular City Council meeting of April 16, 2016 order. Let's please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as voiced in accordance with open meeting on. Here I place all agenda items on the table for the discussion. With an addition, under new business C, approve leave to pick up contract and D, bench removal from City Hall property. And then you had a correction in-
Correction in the minutes.
In the minutes? What's the wish of the council on the agenda approval? We got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilman Gushick, to approve the agenda with the additions. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Agenda is adopted. Approval of the minutes. Copy of the minutes for special work session of April 4, 2016, and the regular City Council meeting of April 4, 2016 are enclosed. What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the updated minutes.
Second.
We got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilman Lodergan, to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries approval of the bills. Approved checks number 93858 through 93951 totaling $216,719.54. Mr. Gushick?
According to, you're here, turn to page 7.
I just took as good news under billion inspections. We must have a lot of stuff going on.
Some large permits for central Minnesota renewables and I believe the hospitals. But yes, it's been busy.
Page 9. Looks like Tri-City's been busy, so roads are starting to get taken care of.
Yeah, that was the final payment on last year's project.
Oh, from last year?
Correct.
Nothing new recently?
Not yet, no.
Moving equipment in?
They are starting on the property, correct.
As far as painting the lines, when was that scheduled this year?
That's actually on the agenda for work tonight.
Okay. Page 10. Page 11. Page 12. Final page, 13. I make a motion to approve the payment of the bills.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Alderman Hercock. Approval of the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries awards, donations, presentations, appropriations. Donation, Westside Improvement Association, Deb?
Good evening, I'm Deb Redcat. I'm with the Westside Improvement Association. And my son and Rosie LeBlanc are here to present you with a check for $5,000. And we are donating that to you for improvements towards the field two at the Lumber- What do they call it down in the middle?
Oh, complex.
Lions what?
Lumber Lions complex.
Lumber Lions complex, there we go. Anyway, so it's just to help with the improvements there. We've been working quite a while for these donations.
Thank you very much to the Westside Business Association. Oh, I'm sorry.
Improvements.
Improvements.
Okay, posting up. For the donation, it's greatly appreciated having spent a lot of time about two blocks from there, which is where I live originally. And a lot of time on the ball fields. I know all the activity that goes on out there, Jeremy knows very well.
So now, so thank you for that investment.
It will be a great addition to help that area, so thank you.
You know, sitting on Parks and Rec, it makes you feel good. There's organizations like the Westside Improvement that has stuck a lot of money into helping that area. A lot of times, they don't get the notice they should, but they do a lot of good work there. I appreciate it. Parks and Rec appreciates it, and I'm sure the city does.
Do we want to add it to the resolution tonight?
I'll just add it till the next quarter.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2016-27, accept donations first quarter 2016.
So before you tonight, you have resolution 2016-27, which is resolu- or, excuse me, donations for the first quarter of the year, including plagues that were donated to the Parks Department from American Legion Post 46, two AEDs that were donated to the Police Department from CHI St. Gabriel's Health, two chairs donated to the library from Friends of the Library, $500 to the Fire Department from Emil and Judy Grove, and then $10,000 to Little Falls Lumber Lions Park from the Little Falls Lumber Lions. They also donated $5,000 towards softball field improvements and $500 towards the lights at Laker Park.
What's the wish of the council on resolution 2016-27?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Councilman Canopla. Approval of resolution 2016-27 with the first quarter donations. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution caller, roll please.
Boyum?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Lodergan?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Ampler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Carries.
Consent agenda. 2015 consumer confidence report received. Animal control report, March 2016 received. Application for exempt permit, Raffle, June 26, 2016, approved. Building report, March 2016, received. Economic Development Authority Minutes, April 2016, received. Energy and Environmental Committee Minutes, March 2016, received. Fire Department Report, March 2016, received. Heritage Preservation Commission Minutes, April 2016, received. Housing Redevelopment Authority Minutes, March 2016, received. Planning Commission Minutes, March 2016, received. Public Works Department Report, March 2016, received. Walk Run Permit, Live Better Live Longer, May 21, 2016, approved. Waste Water Facility Report, March 2016, received. Water Facility Report, March 2016, received. What's the wish of the council on the consent?
I'll make a motion to approve and receive the items from the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Alderman Hercock, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries public hearings and lettings, resolution 2016-25, order public improvement 374, surface and utility improvements, Third Avenue Northeast. Have that dated, everything?
Have the application as well as the affidavit of mailing to the proper owners along the property. Tonight, we have the public hearing for Project 374, which is Third Avenue Northeast. The project location that we're looking at is between Third and Fourth Streets, Northeast, on Third Avenue Northeast. So in 2014, we constructed this section. And then in 2015, we constructed the two blocks south of there. 2016 project extends from Fourth Avenue up to the tracks. There's a three block stretch there. We did receive bids on that. If you've driven the past, you'll notice that work is progressing right now. And tonight, we are asking the council to go ahead and approve the one block section between Third and Fourth Street on Third Avenue Northeast. Looking at the project need, you know, we do have a phaser rating of two, which you'll see pictures of that in coming slides, which means the pavement is in very poor condition. There is no city water main along that stretch. There's a common service for three properties along there. From our records, it was installed in pre-1939. The best that we can see is that it was around 1938, but we don't have definitive time on that. We do have an eighteen sanitary sewer that was installed in 1939. Those plans do show a water line or a service line into there. That's why I say it's pre-1939. This was the BCP pitch pipe clay pipe that was installed. It is exhibiting cracks both on the top and the bottom of the pipe. And other multiple hairline cracks that you'll see here in the coming slides. So this is a slide showing the section of the road that we're looking at replacing. You can see there's a lot of block cracking going on. A curb deteriorated out to the side as well. There are some sections that don't have curb and gutter. And when we were looking at projects, we want to look to see what condition the pavement's in and then look to see if the utilities are in sufficient condition. If we do anything on the surface, we want to make sure the utilities underneath will outlive the pavement or live as long as the pavement as well. So looking at a typical pavement lifecycle, this is when we install it, you're in very good condition. Over time, it gradually creates potholes, cracks, and the ride gets worse and worse. There are maintenance activities that you can do to get it back up to good condition, whether it's seal coating, crack sealing, various patching. But over time, those, that starts to deteriorate as well. And you can keep adding this for quite some time in order to maintain that ripidity. Unfortunately, with the very poor condition we're down in this neck of the woods with the pavement condition, there's really no cost-effective way to rehab that pavement to get it in decent condition where you would like to see the pavement. Looking at the pipe condition of the sanitary sewer in this slide, you can see there's a hairline crack right at the 12 o'clock or at the top of the pipe. And there's also one right at the bottom. So there's something in that pipe that's actually making those two crack and potentially just claps on itself because there's a crack on the top and a crack on the bottom in that stretch. You also notice in this picture on the right here, this is a sewer service with root hair or with tree roots growing into the service. As tree roots start, they're multiple size of hair, but then over time, they continually get bigger and bigger. And they will open that seam up to infiltration and potentially crack that at that point. So the proposed improvements that we're looking at here is a full depth reconstruction of the pavement, building the curb and gutter. We'd have a 32-foot wide street curb to curb, seven-ton pavement section, which is typical for residential street. And we'd have sidewalk on the north like it is currently today. We'd reconstruct the sidewalk, install new water main and services to the properties, and then restore the boulevards and the driveways as they are today. So why would we want to do this project now? As I mentioned, the infrastructure has deteriorated. The streets met or exceeded the anticipated life based on the block cracking that we see. Continued application of any type of pavement maintenance is not going to be cost-effective. Anything that we do on there is really going to be, with the exception of reconstruction, is going to be a waste of money. If we seal coat that or we try to do anything in terms of crack sealing, it's just not going to be cost-effective to maintain it considering where it's at on that curb. The construction market is extremely competitive pricing. We saw earlier when we bid our Third Street project, we got very good pricing on that. And then the bond markets have been very favorable in terms of the interest rates ever since about 2008 when we started selling bonds. We know it's really good rates with that. So in the fitting of comparable costs, if you recall in our feasibility report, we had a payment estimate there of $171,000. Since then, we looked at what we were getting on our Third Street project as well as checking to see what the market would give us in terms of a product cost for that stretch. Right now, after, you know, construction engineering contingency, we're at about $108,951 for that stretch. So the price did come down considerably. And these are using the unit prices from our Third Street project, which I anticipate we'll be able to use those. So looking at the project funding, and keep in mind, this is with our updated pricing here. The assessments come in at $33,360. The city would kick in $75,591, which equates to about just under 70%. The assessments will be at 4% for over 15 years. And our assessment policy has a goal of assessing 50% of the project cost. So 25% to the left side, 25% to the right side of property owns, and the city would pick up 50%. We're getting closer, we're not quite there yet, but we are getting closer to that goal of that 50%. Looking at our assessment rates, curb and gutter, the tunis for the front footage is at $38 a foot. Side footage is at $19 a foot. Sanitary sewer replacement will be at $20. A six-inch service line, $600 apiece. Water main will be at $30 per foot. Water service is at $1,200 each. And the service number for residential is at 15 cents per square foot of the property. So the city intends to sell general obligation bonds. All or some of the product may be combined into one overall product for construction and/or bonding purposes. About the orders who are disabled, who meet income guidelines, and are 65 years major or older may apply to deferment. An active military service, as applied by Minnesota statute 190.05, may also apply for deferment. Looking at the next steps, tonight, we've got the public hearing on April 18. The design would move forward in the month of April, potentially awarding a contract in May with construction also beginning in May. And then maybe we would have a special assessment hearing anytime after construction begins, with construction being completed this summer, potentially in October 2016 with all the bunch lists and such. Any questions?
Greg, was this, is this a staff-initiated?
This is a staff-initiated project. And so in order for this to move forward, we do need a 7/8 vote in order to move forward with this project, yes.
And Greg, you had mentioned that there are cracks. Are there any breaks?
Well, there are cracks here, but I mean, is there, is there any soil falling down through there yet? No, there's not. You really don't want to get to that point where there's actual soil that's falling into it. That's, that's bigger problems than what you want to get into. So you want to take care of it before then.
And then to the roots, is there a rooter system or chemical process that could work with that?
That's only, that's only a temporary solution. Where we have roots in the line, we treat them. And we put that chemical down about every year. And it'll take care of the roots, but then they'll keep coming back. Once they know there's a source of water there, the roots will keep getting back into there.
And we have talked about this last year, and we decided not to do it.
Correct.
And with some of the projects, we did do, we had some concerns relative to the property values being increased by at least the amount of the assessment. Is there any way of determining if that will happen here?
In terms of, we can do appraisals before and after on that if the council so chooses.
Is there any idea how long the cracks are? Is it just one section of pipe there?
No, this was basically representative sample of the pipe. There's about three or four sticks that aren't cracked right into there.
How many residences are on that stretch?
There's four on the north and two on the south. We did get one letter, which I put in front of you this evening, that was against the product. I did get a phone call from another property owner that said he was opposed to it last year, but was not going to oppose it this year. So those are really the only two conversations that I've had regarding the project.
So that $33,000, was that what it was for total for residents?
That's correct, yes.
And so that would be divided by how many?
Probably six. It's based on the front footage and the lot size. So if you have a wider lot, you will have a larger proportion of the cost.
So our residents have this one that's at $10,000. Because of the reduced cost, that should come down some.
Their costs are set up based on our fee schedule. So that $38 a foot. The city is still paying more than the $38 per foot for it. So because we've got the reduced cost, we're able to do it less expensive, but the $38 is set in our fee schedule ameliorated. And those are based off of basically our 2015 rates. And that's how we fix or establish low rates at the beginning of the year.
Well, on the south side of the road, it's all side footage, isn't it?
It's all side footage, yes. So the two on the south side are side footage. The two corner lots are side footage. And then there's two in the middle of the block, those are front footage. So you've got side footage at $19 a foot and then front footage at the $38. So the two in the middle do have a higher price per foot, but that's because it's a-
For, they're small, narrow lots comparatively.
Correct. Correct, yes.
And this is also a section of property that has private property lines, correct?
Private property line.
Service in there?
It has a common or private water service for that for three of the houses on the north, yes.
Have the assessments been preliminary or predetermined?
Yes, and those go out with the notice and the public hearing. So they have those.
So would our letter writers say that would be accurate?
That's correct, yes.
Not really, because you know, here for $107,000 and $108,000, so it's not very accurate.
No, the $10,000 mark is relatively low, yes.
And we, I can't remember that part. When we ordered it done last year, I don't remember if that was really over a total that we wanted to spend.
Correct, every year, we try to, we try to budget about right around a million, 1.1 million dollars worth of improvements. We gauge that based on how much debt we're paying down as well as how much infrastructure we need that we have for replacement. When we looked at all of the projects last year, our estimate was closer to the 1.4 million dollars worth. And this was one of the ones on the bottom of the list in terms of, in terms of our 2015 project. So to try to stay within budget in terms of how much we could afford and not increase our debt, that was the project that was not moved forward. Now, this year, with our Third Street coming in where it's at, we do have additional budget for this project. So that's why we're moving it forward too tonight.
What makes this particular stretch of road attractive to do now as opposed to some that? I know you have the phaser rating and two, but I know there's streets in town that are worse than that one.
It's the phaser rating along with the sanitary sewer condition as well as having a private water service there. And we want to be able to get that, take care of, get that water main looped and connect it on both ends so that it is a city water main. You know, and once we look at the pavement, if the stuff underneath it isn't in good shape, there's no sense putting any money into the pavement.
And one of the people who responded doesn't want it, says their water is working fine. Never has been an issue. And we're the two south properties, right?
He's one of the north properties on the north side, yes, right next to the other.
So there's four properties on the north, and two of them have city service and two don't?
No, all of them have city service. But one, well, three of them on the north have city service by a common water line.
Okay.
Okay, so these are the four parcels on the north. This one is connected up to the private service line. This one is connected up, and this one is connected up as well from a private water line. That all comes over to the Fourth Street side. This one has service off of-
Okay.
Has water service off the floor. And then these are served off of Third and Fourth.
So the three on the northwest are non-city private water line?
Private water line, yes.
And one of them people, they don't want this.
Correct. And the other one, which is the neighbor, was opposed to it last year, indicated he's not going to oppose it this year.
Well, I know it's beneficial if we can loop it. If we're going to tear the road up, we have to deal with water. We're not going to bypass that and deal with it later. You know, it might be working fine now, but who's to say in two months or a year?
We saw it over on Fourth Street Northwest, where it broke two years in a row, basically 20 deep to one another. So it's, it can happen. Knowing that it's from 1938, it's past its, its useful life.
And if it does break, it still falls on the city to repair it. That's our practice.
It has been our practice in the past, unfortunately.
And that's the middle of January?
Yes.
And if the sewer line is cracked off the bottom, that's just a matter of time till it breaks the rest of the way.
And while something works, we're always happy. And I'm sure there's a different tone would come out if that did snap in the middle of winter, and we can't get water to it right now. So there's a few things to look at here.
Any comment from the public? Any public comment? Hearing none, close the public hearing. What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a second for discussion?
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Councilman Lodergan. Approval of resolution 2016-25, discussion?
So my house is cracked going out, and I will be getting it fixed a quarter to winter. What was my hope?
Even after reading this letter, you know, we all don't like to spend money. Something's working. Makes a good argument, but you have to look at what's better in the long term. And I think we need to work on that sewer system, get that fixed up. And if we tear that up, we have to change water services and get that all done right. Not do it halfway, only to tear it up again. So I'd say it's a good project to work on. We probably should do it now, it's a good time.
And it fits in our budget for projects.
Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, resolution caller, roll please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Lodergan?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Ampler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Carries.
On the lettings, electrical works, Minnesota Next Level, Lumber Lions Complex, Park Complex.
Greg, in your council packet, I've got a memo with the chart behind me, essentially what this, the electrical usage over at Lumber Lions Park. As you can see on the chart, there's peaks and valleys like you normally expect. But one of the odd things that we've been trying to isolate and identify where it's coming from is in the months of April as well as November, when there's really nothing going on over at the park, we still got some electric usage being generated over there. Now, looking at the, and I'm going to jump over here. Looking at the way that the electricity is being routed to the facility, we believe that's the reason why we're getting the usage. Right now, right now, the power comes in off the Minnesota Powers line on Third Avenue. Comes to a meter, which is normally used for a high-demand user such as industry or someone like that. But because we've got the large ball fields, it makes sense because of that high volume electricity or that type of meter. But in the winter months, when those are not being used, it's still going through that meter to feed, you know, the building, the warming house, and then the hockey rink as well as the outdoor hockey rink here. It's our belief that meter is not necessarily accurately reading the low flows going through that meter. So tonight, what we'd like to do- So what, tonight, what we'd like to do in an attempt to, uh, better qualify how much electricity we're using over there is get approval to put a conduit underneath the, the skating rink area here as well as the parking lot uh, in order to ultimately install a meter that you would have such as at your residential household that'll read these smaller, um, flows so that we can, uh, try to get those, those rates or those usages to where we believe they, they should, should be located.
Would you have to put a conduit right across the park, maybe go a little further north and hang in there?
Well, right now it's being fed off of this pole right here. And so we'd have to intercept this line at some point. Um, and there's already an existing pole with a transformer right here. It makes sense to have that be the location for the, the meter. And that's why we want to intercept that line somewhere. It made sense to have it close to where this pole was at, just so that we can locate it in the future if we, if we need to.
Won't do too much damage to the parking lot, just a narrow track?
It'll go right underneath it, see all the, see all the service.
Or under?
Yeah, yeah. Now, tonight, we do have, uh, this is the cost just to, to bore the line underneath. We'd still need to include the, um, the cable and the electrical work to, to finally complete this. But we want to get this in place, um, just because they are around town often and it's something that we want to move forward with.
So what are we, what's this gonna cost if throw another meter on, how do we say you got a meter fee?
The meter fee is twelve dollars a month.
Plus electricity, right?
Plus electricity.
So then we're gonna have dual. You, you be sort of one in four hundred?
Correct. Our lowest, our lowest bill here is a hundred and fifty dollars in April, when we're, we've got nothing going on there. No ball, no ball fields, no hockey rinks, nothing. And, you know, a hundred and fifty bucks, that'll go a long ways towards that meter fee.
Is it actually that or is there stray voltage we're losing somewhere else through another? We feel somewhere else, we just throw money behind, lost money?
Well.
We end up getting nothing when we're done?
We've checked that. Um, we've gone so far as, you know, checking these transformers for the two ball fields to see if they were using anything. There wasn't anything there. Um, we've checked this transformer and there's no usage necessarily on that. So it, it's our belief it's gotta be in, the low flow that we're using isn't registering properly through that, through that meter. See, when it goes around and reads one, it's actually four hundred. So you'll notice in this graph, everything is a unit of four hundred. That's what it reads, it reads four hundred kilowatt hours, uh, as opposed to something at your residential house, which is much less than that.
So if we redo it this way in the month of April when no light thrown on the ball field, it shouldn't move at all?
It shouldn't move at all.
That's all that will be on it is the ball field lights?
That's correct. And that way we can definitively say there is zero usage on this meter. We shouldn't have any demand charge or electric charge, uh, on that meter.
And if we asked them to replace the meter?
We've done that already.
And it's made no difference?
No. That's why we believe it's, the low flows are not registering accurately through there.
What's their contention?
That it's accurate? They've tested the, the meter, um, the meter is accurate in their turn, in their eyes. But again, it's, that type of meter setup, it's used for a high usage, uh, customer. Which is what we do need because of the ball fields. There's fifty-six fifteen hundred watt bulbs. When that thing turns on, you pull a lot of power through there. So we believe it, it reads that accurately because of the high volume. But just like, you know, a water meter, if you're on the far side of the scale in terms of their usage, that, that's where your, your, uh, error is gonna occur.
So this is gonna save us money for two months out of the year?
No.
Basically?
Through the, the winter months is when it would save us money. So November, December, January, February, March, and then April, and that's when the ball field would kick in again.
Cause you only need the, you only need the high voltage meter for the lights on the ball field.
Correct.
This would cover the skating rink and the pavilions for everything else. They would read off the lower meter, which hopefully would be reading more accurately. So even in those off months, um, we're not gonna be seeing those high peaks. It should be closer to, it, it'll get closer to what it is.
So potentially we could have the, actually, we could be saving the extra four hundred kilowatt hours
at the top end of every single one of those, uh, off, off-season months.
Right.
Could be, or they round to the nearest one, so maybe it's, you only got a half in April and you're rounding. You know, you got five eights and round it up to one, is that how it's working? Any of you that know short on the next month?
It is, but that doesn't explain why, you know, some of these months, uh, like in April, why we're reading three when there's absolutely nothing going on there, no lights being turned on, nothing. Uh, I mean, the HVAC was even turned off and we're still, still reading three, which makes no sense.
There's definitely one of my extensions over there.
It's running wrong, it's doing during the daytime in the summer months as well.
Right, right.
So it might save a lot all across the board.
Potentially, we're, we're trying to find where this, this is coming from.
Oh, we're, have we got an estimate on the rest of our bill? This is just putting a hole in the ground.
This is just putting a hole in the ground.
Our electric, you know, our electric, should we have another five, six, seven grand? I bet you before we're done.
I haven't, I haven't pulled those numbers yet, no.
I think it'll be appropriate to have a whole bill before you approve part of it, cause once we do part of it, it's gonna turn and run the other way after that. Don't look, be too much to ask for an estimate on the project.
We can.
Cut our power completely.
We've done that.
I mean, even up to that transformer.
I just, have we explored every option? I mean, with the, we'll just call it the high side for the ball fields. I mean, can the service be split right there at that point with a, an on-off breaker that? We'd ask department can throw a lock on it? In twenty fifteen, the summer twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, each one of these transformers, if you look at them, there's a, basically we'll call it a breaker. Um, we had them pull that all together, so absolutely no power was going to either one of the ball field one or ball field two. Well, this over here was still in use to, to serve this, but that didn't change any of the, any of the usage.
It's still on a common meter.
It's still on a common meter, exactly. And that's where we're getting back to, we believe it's the low flow that's coming through here that's not being accurately read because of the size of the.
I'm just trying to picture how you have that mapped out and can't we just go right where the main meter is right now and have them split the this service off and put a, a meter right next to it?
Normally your household meter is, you know, one twenty-two kilovolt. This is reading thirty-two thousand kilovolts. So you can't necessarily take this line here and split it because it's too high of a voltage for, for your household meter socket. We've gotta come off here and go over the transformer and then into, into that, into that meter.
I feel like you see the unusual expenses too. I mean, this is, you know, eighteen hundred, what's it gonna cost to page it off?
And you would think, uh, our company would have some responsibility concerning that. They know there's no power going back there, but they're still charging us for it.
Yeah, the only power in the wintertime that comes through here comes around like this and then into, into the hockey rink. And then it feeds back this way and into, uh, this facility here. But it's still going through that, that meter.
What's the wish of the council on?
Can we wait for the other information?
Motion to table, we'll do it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Then we can see the whole picture.
Do I have a motion?
Um.
To table?
Table.
You have a second?
Yes.
Motion by Councilman Canopla, second by Paul Muharkak. Table for additional information? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose, same sign. Motion carries. Painting quotes landscapes, great.
On your interview, we have the quotes for painting. Uh, the low quote came from landscape, uh, striping. So tonight, we would ask that the council approves the low, the low quote to landscape in the amount of seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and ten cents to be charged to the street department. If you recall, every year, uh, we try to do about twenty thousand dollars worth, worth of, um, striping, paving markings throughout the city. We kind of break it up into three quadrants, uh, and do those sections of it. Um, again, tonight, uh, low quote from the landscape line striping out of Villarreal.
What's the wish of the council?
Make motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Kuchek, second by Councilman Hanson for approval, discussion?
Boy, that's quite a difference in prices, isn't it?
It is.
So what, what group must feature artist?
Villager must be closer.
Who did it for us last year?
Landscape.
Landscape's been over the last four, five years, I mean, they have to.
One, one question I have though is, if you go around and you look at the stuff they done last year, is there any way we can get, I know, I'm sure it's gonna cost more in the long run, but for even the scrape to loose paint, you got all that scaling flake and paint. They paint over the top, over a week later you go and the paint scales and falls off and it's down to bare concrete?
We can go with our, our jet truck and basically pressure wash that area, uh, so that it's, so the loose stuff is gone.
Right, I don't know, I just think you can go by two weeks active and air paint and you can see where it's all peeled up and it was something our city crews can do before they come through. You notice on a lot of the curves or, or in corners where they're painting yellow?
Yep.
Sure you run into it.
That would have been the price difference there, one outfit actually cleans it off first.
This price is strictly to, to paint over.
To, to paint, uh, clean.
Correct.
Don't correct words.
Just, yeah.
I don't know, I think it'd be advantageous for us to do it.
Yeah, we can.
Well, it does okay to put the paint on, it's gonna come right off. Should do it right.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose, same sign. Motion carries. Except for recommendation of the Housing Redevelopment Authority, resolution twenty sixteen to twenty-four, acquisition of property. Harrison, Paula Garrison, accept. Lauren?
Um, the city's received several complaints about ablated property at two oh seven Merthies Third Street. Um, in discussion with the HRA, that, that lot where the house sits is an unbuiltable lot. It's too narrow to rebuild on. The house is vacant. Um, we've contacted the owners of the property. They have agreed to basically deed the house over to the city. Um, the city will then work on tearing the house down and then the budding property or adjoining property owner who also has, he, he owns the south half of the lot, has agreed to purchase the lot from us once we get the house tore down. So, um, it's a good move, I think the HRA is, is excited about doing this. Um, you know, we'll, we'll demo the house, it's a, it's a blighted property, clean up the neighborhood a little bit, get it back on the tax rolls and make the lot to the south then a buildable lot, we have a whole house in the lot.
So is there gonna change to make it another buildable lot, to be combining two lots to make it a compliant?
Yeah, one buildable, yes.
One compliant, buildable lot.
And this is part of what the HRA collects money to deal with blighted issues and this seems to be a good one to deal with.
Is this a cattle?
Yes.
What are you talking about?
Foot cats, drive by there sometime, they're sitting in the windows and they're sitting in the. You think I was talking about?
Sure.
Yeah, if you wonder.
Brad, can you do a street view?
Uh, yeah.
All right, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll strike it in.
A motion by Councilman Goldgren, second by Councilman Bushick.
So this is one of, on one of our recently upgraded streets, right?
Street, normally assessments?
Correct.
That was one of the things we brought up at HRA. It, right now, it's not being taken care of, it's not collecting anything. And, uh, this way it is put on the tax roll because property to the south showed interest in buying it to make.
There's a house on the south, southern one now?
Yeah. And on this property, all that's gonna remain is there is a little garage that's in fair condition. So if it is combined, the garage could stay. If it's not, then we'd have another expansion moving garage because you can't have a lot with just a garage on it.
Could, when it's great, you just think, I believe it'd be able to stay, you won't have to tear it down if there was a primary structure at the time of the construction. I would believe that somebody's house burned down, you can make them tear their garage down?
No, but this is a different condition, we're removing the house.
Right, so you can make them remove their garage, remove the house, because their house is gone, you make them tear their garage down too?
I guess, uh, we'd have to discuss that and plan.
Thank you, Dee. Find the heart and make them tear it down. Where to go?
Sorry to create the trouble for you, there's a turn. I mean, have the, have the two property owners attempted to strike a deal and leave us open?
Um, I visited with the property owner to the south and the concern is there's back taxes on the property. It hasn't, taxes haven't been paid for quite some time and the cost to demo the house would be quite expensive. And so, um, you know, his, his thing was he, he's not gonna go through the expense of demoing it and landfilling it and taking care of back taxes and all those kinds of things. You know, he, he just doesn't want that hassle.
If it's cleaned off, it's the property of city lots worth five thousand some odd dollars.
I believe so, yeah.
And if he would tear it down himself and pay a back taxes, he's looking at substantially a larger wallet, which then he loses interest in doing it.
So it's gonna be a five thousand dollar lot and what's demo gonna be?
Probably costs fifteen, to be a gentleman.
Quite dense of that.
That's what HRA is for, to take care of issues like this where eventually you're gonna lose the property to back taxes and then it's gonna be in somebody's lap at that part.
And, and if it goes tax forfeit, I mean, that's exactly, it, it just goes tax forfeit, nobody takes care of it. It still sits there, it's still an eyesore, you still have cats in it and, you know, the neighbors are still complaining. And if we wait for it to go tax forfeit, it'll, I think it's three years back taxes right now. So we'd have to wait at least another four years for it to go tax forfeit.
We're gonna have to do it anyway, just do it and get it done.
What's gonna happen to the cats once the house is torn down, they just call the neighborhood or?
Have the main society to pick them up?
Police department will be there to pick them up.
No. Fred will be there.
Fred will be there, of course. Probably by there, you can see when the windows are set, three, four, five, six.
Was it a residence, a rental property?
It was a residence, it was, um, the, somebody owned it and lived in it and they just basically walked away from it. It got so bad they couldn't afford to take care of it and they just walked away.
I think he lives right next door now, I think he rents.
Yes, yes.
Regardless of benefits, has to get rid of it. If that's what the fund is for, it's gotta get it done.
You know, if it would be a buildable lot, it would be a different story, you know, somebody else might come in and do it. But this is a non-compliant lot and so it, I don't think, I mean, the house should be come down to the, in the shape that it's in. And if somebody bought it, they really couldn't do anything with it anymore.
Yeah, I don't even know in that condition if it would even, if you could even close on it. Cause we're not gonna sign up on what you mean, uh, the non-conforming lot issue for somebody to purchase the property. They, if they knew, they would have to tear the house down. We would have to step in and say, yeah, go ahead and you can do it, but I don't think in this condition or, and our rules that we would say yes to do that. So it seems to be the cleanest way to facilitate getting out of non-comformity.
It's been kind of the goal to make conforming lots in situations like this. HRA really picks and chooses which projects they take on. And one of the things we're usually looking for is to make conforming lots. Take care of these places at the same time, so it kills two birds with one stone. It's like it kills two birds with one stone. With many cats.
Well, at least they're not asking for another ten or fifteen thousand on top of their part. They're willing to sign it over. So I got a motion, any further discussion?
Should the city buy this or get this, will we get our money out of it?
No. That's where HRA funds it for, I'll eat the difference. It's gonna be a loss no matter what... What we go about it, it's not gonna be a money-making or break-even proposition.
This is set up so blight issues like this don't continue. You can actually take care of them. Or else, it's like Laurie said, if you have tax forfeit here, it's gonna sit there, just deteriorate, get worse, and have a lot of unhappy neighbors. And situations that could become dangerous.
Any other discussion? Resolution, call a roll, please.
Lildegren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yeah.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution twenty-sixteen dash twenty-six. Order and stop sign, Twelfth Street Northeast?
On Twelfth Street Northeast at the intersection of Sixth Avenue, we'd like to add stop signs both north and south bound traffic in that section. I spoke with the police chief, he's in agreements to the stop signs in that area. Does meet our city policy requirements. So tonight, we're asking for the council's approval to go ahead and put stop signs at that intersection for the north and south bound traffic.
Do you have that, ever?
Is there not a dead end?
There's a dead end on the north as well as on the east. The issue that we're seeing is there's individuals that come through there, and they don't necessarily signal their turns very well. And through there, there's also an autistic child that lives back in that area. So it's more of a safety issue to slow traffic down in through that section.
You're welcome to sit tonight, Brett.
Bear with me while I pull that up.
So let's mirror the back over and set stop for it.
Yes.
At him, should be back behind, past time of goal?
Correct.
You've received a lot of complaints?
Yeah.
Or wait, can I get a motion on this one, too?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, he did.
Got a motion by Oliver Hurcock?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Bushick?
Ever. So here's Twelfth, and this is the intersection that we'd like to have north and south bound signs installed.
It just doesn't seem like there should be that much traffic coming through there.
You got four houses to the north? So it's a four-hose intersection? Is there even that up there?
There's at least four.
Looks like two on the right, two on the left.
There's at least four, I'm not sure if there's a different one there or not, but...
So basically, we're putting up stop signs for... There's a four family.
There's some up there that are going at high rates of speed, yes.
Maybe that should be the issue, take care of their speeding and... Otherwise, then you put up a stop sign and it's that...
Well, is it currently an uncontrolled intersection?
It's currently uncontrolled, yes.
Okay. Well, whether it be a stop sign or a yield sign, I'm in favor of eliminating an uncontrolled intersection.
Yield sign's not working out. So we're gonna put signs, everyone wants to put a stop sign in?
You can put the torque down to somebody if there's a yield sign there.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll?
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
No.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Lildegren?
Yes.
Carries.
Prove leaf pickup contract, day of hearing?
Similar to what we've done this in the past for the day of hearing. The city organized a leaf collection for the day of hearing. Excuse me. This year, again, we'd be working with the local haulers to pick up those leaves that the schoolchildren, the volunteers rake out to various properties in the city of Little Falls. Tonight, we'd be asking for the council to approve up to twenty-seven-hundred dollars' worth to go towards paying the garbage haulers to pick up the leaves and bring them over to the compost site. Years past, specifically with last year, we did give each one a thousand dollars. This year, we're proposing to give each one nine-hundred dollars. I have reached out to all three of them. I've heard back from two of them that they would commit to that. I'm waiting to hear back from the third one. But knowing that the day of hearing is on May fourth, we don't necessarily have time to hear back from that third one whether or not they'd be willing to accept that. So in the event that the third one does not, we'd be looking to, you know, either split it amongst those two, but we would like the council's approval to spend twenty-seven-hundred dollars towards the leaf pickup for the day of hearing.
Which wish of the council?
So...
Second.
A motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilman Knopfle, for approval. Is there any score fund on any of that?
Hart's improvement, uh, Hart's budget.
Hart's budget?
Hart's budget.
Why did we choose that one, may I ask?
Score fund is spent on the leaf pickup, the split called leaf pickup in the summer, old garbage and plants.
And then in addition to picking up the leaves at the various residences, they also... The kids also do work at the various... Hart's. Hart's.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Bench removal, City Hall property. Tom?
Yes, so the lease is expired on the bench that is... The advertising bench that is on City Hall property. I know this was discussed in the past to... That one, that lease would expire, that the city would be interested in just removing the bench or renewing the lease. I know the advertisers looking for an answer for us to... For our decision. So this was something that was brought up in the past. Figured it was the opportune time to make our decision.
Which wish of the council? Remove the bench from City Hall property?
I'll make a motion to remove the bench.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilman Knopfle? Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say something. I don't feel a bench there is appropriate. If somebody does add, put an add on there, it's kinda like was brought up in the special works. It makes it look like we're kinda supporting that person or business. When there's a lot of businesses in town. So I don't think, you know, on public property, like Little Falls is in charge of it, I don't think we need benches there for that purpose.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think we have to be careful to understand that the content of this, of the bench is an irrelevant issue at this point. It's a matter of whether or not we wanna have a bench on public property next to City Hall. And I guess I would think that it should be removed, but not based upon any content that may be on it.
Given what I said, it has nothing to do with content. It's just... I just don't feel that's a good place.
Mr. President, so removing that is in no way a violation of our agreement due to lawsuits or anything?
Well, it's the lease expired, and it was no longer renewed than that. It could be...
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Any got any other courts?
I had just a question here. City Council, County Commissioners' joint meeting was canceled. Couldn't we arrange it, or...
There was conflicts with the Wednesday evening time from a couple of the council members. We're getting... At the time when we were canceling it, there was three, and then actually one could make it that time. We had some discussion about what might be a better opportunity for an evening. I sent out a message asking for a reply about May ninth, which is a planning commission night for us. So would that be okay to meet prior to it at five-thirty here and then, you know, and before, prior to the planning commission? It's all written with me.
Is an hour enough time? Doesn't the party start at six-thirty?
It does start at six-thirty.
Is an hour enough time to cover what we wanna cover?
Well, then, did the last one and the one before we were missing, we didn't have our full council at either one of them that I can remember. In fact, I think there was two or three missing. So if there's no decision making, it's a...
No, it's...
It's not like we would have to quit at that time necessarily.
Yeah, other than the logistics of meeting here and meeting with the planning commission, you know, overlapping if we were finding an alternate location for either one. If the county's amenable to us meeting there, they'd also have meeting spaces at the county, too, if that was... If it just worked better that we were at one and the planning commission members had to leave that, you know, the joint meeting to leave the planning commission meeting if they're okay with that.
Is there a possibility we could meet in the room over there for planning commission? Do we have any public hearings or anything on the docket that night?
Not that, no, I don't think so.
Otherwise, you know, there usually isn't that many people at the meetings. We could probably, you know, if you held a meeting in here, a joint meeting, we could go and have our planning commission meeting right over there.
Correct. Yep, we can make the arrangements if that's what's needed. So, yeah, I guess if any, no one has conflict with that date, then that's a date that we'll look forward, schedule and hopes for that. Because it works for you, Tom.
May ninth, five-thirty?
May ninth, five-thirty. Okay, we'll look at, verify with the planning commission agenda, making sure that that's all right. But I think for just logistics, it'd probably be better to set up meetings separately.
Anyone else got anything? Announcements? Tom? All good? Hearing none, all adjourned at eight-thirty-four?